You get ordered.
Audubon Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Mr. Banton.
Present.
Mr. Boaz. Mr. Boaz. Commissioner Bradley.
President.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Present.
Commissioner Keong. Commissioner Williams. Chair Strather.
Present.
Mr. Boaz.
Present, sorry, double muted.
Basically, somebody say call. With that, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes. It has, they have been sent out to commissioners. Hopefully, you had opportunity to read over them and review them. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move Commissioner Bradley.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, second by Commissioner. Banton, I'm sorry. Call for vote.
Audubon Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Mr. Banton. Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Garmendia.
Aye.
Mr. Keong. Mr. Williams. Chair Strather. And the motion passes with our president voting aye.
Being here, we don't have a very long agenda, just a couple of items we need to engage with. Uh, the part, there is a presentation from Marion, then we'll hear a report from the cultural resource. Uh, then we'll have some question discussions. Then there's an update on a stability plan. And we'll give a report on the committee work. Uh, with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Marion to go from there.
So the first item is of kinds that the commission does not see often, but it has seen maybe a couple dozen over the course of its 25 year tenure. And it is the first step in a request for review by the planning commission of a preservation board demolition denial or demolition decision. So as a refresher, because these are kind of infrequent or uncommon items by ordinance and the preservation board's ordinance. Demolition decisions by the preservation board may be brought before the planning commission for review. And this is a two-step process, the first step being, um, what's occurring tonight, which is whether to undertake a review at all. And then the second step would be if the planning commission opts to undertake that review, fully conducting that review, which can be a fairly detailed process. So, uh, we, and to be clear, we are at step one, deciding whether to undertake that review. If the planning commission decides to undertake review, that review happens kind of with the same applicable standards as the preservation board would use in this case. For reviewing something in a preservation review district. And no new or additional evidence may be considered, so the planning commission would be reviewing the record as presented to the preservation board. And during that review, again, if the planning commission decides tonight to take it up, there are three options. To affirm or uphold the preservation board's decision, which was in this case to deny the demolition permit. To reverse or overturn the preservation board's decision, or to find a modification to the preservation board's decision. So a very quick overview of the subject of this request for review. It is an address, um, sixty-three seventeen through sixty-three nineteen Clayton Avenue in the Clayton Town neighborhood. Two attached one-story buildings in this neighborhood is within a preservation review district. And the proposal is to demolish both structures to create a parking lot. There's a little bit of a history with this issue that's presented, those in the staff report, I'm not here, just gonna review it. This item has actually previously been before the preservation board and before the planning commission. So back in twenty sixteen, the preservation board heard the issue and upheld the cultural resource office director's denial of the demolition permit. The applicant at that time in twenty sixteen then did request for that review, uh, to be presented to the planning condition. And in twenty sixteen, the planning commission did opt to take on that review. But in twenty sixteen, the planning commission upheld the preservation board's denial of the demolition. After that twenty sixteen process, um, the applicant challenged the preservation board's, um, decision in circuit court. And the judge, um, just over a year later ruled to uphold the preservation board's denial as was upheld by the planning. And after that case in circuit court, the applicant then submitted further demolition permits. At, in these months and years as listed here, and all were either denied administratively or by the cultural resources office or withdrawn by the applicant. And so that brings us to this second request for review here in twenty twenty-four. Where again, a demolition permit was, uh, submitted to the city, reviewed by the cultural resources office, the director denied it. And that denial was appealed to the preservation board. And the preservation voted to uphold the director's denial of the demolition. And then the applicant, following the appropriate steps, requested the planning commission review. And so we are now here on August fourteenth at that first step in this two-step process. With the planning commission deciding to either undertake that review or not. And so just to provide a little bit more context, um, my colleague Bob Bettis is gonna provide just an overview of the presentation that was. Made available to the preservation board, just very briefly describing the building and its contents.
Sure, I'm Bob Bettis with CRO. This is the building in question. Uh, it's on the north side of Clayton Avenue. With context, the house is built in about eighteen ninety. And the firm was added on roughly, I think, the nineteen nineties early on. So the building question is right for you. Um, and just sort of clear also, our jurisdiction for this is really boring, being a preservation review district. It's not a historic district, it's just a PRD. Some context for you, sorry, this circle's been moved, but this is the site question. Should be moved over here, so I apologize. But this is the site, it's on the, on the alley along Clayton Avenue. Uh, so the site looking east, here's the, uh, the subject property. Uh, this is the context to the west, this is the alley. We can't see, just a little glare, I apologize. Uh, this is the alley view, this is the rear of the property, the original house, looking north along the alley. In south on the alley, at the, the house in its current condition. This is the rear of the house itself, you see the other, to the left. More shots of the rear. Some more shots of the current condition of the property. Here's some more context to the north, showing me an intact streetscape. It's more context to the west. And also some more context to the west as well. That's across the street, this is the new construction, it's been in place for several years. This is also across the street to the south. And some intact streetscape. And this is looking to the east with the entire street, entire street contacts with the construction as well as the property just right about here, left-hand side. Some more text to the west, showing the intact street wall. It was denied from staff because again, the demolition, uh, took place, it would kind of interrupt that street wall. And CRO felt that it did not meet the criteria of the ordinance, and that the most would be, um, against the ordinance. So we're going to deny it, and the board upheld the demolition. Any questions?
Okay, with that, uh, commission knows how we entertain questions. I'll just simply walk down the list and we go with that, beginning with Commissioner Banton. If there are any questions.
Just a general question about process, so obviously this, it's been a long process and before, how, how often can an applicant come before. CRO to request a demolition, how, was there a sure?
Demolitions, it's a year timeline. If you come back and we deny a demolition, you have one year. Um, if there's, if you come back with a proposal for something different, there's perhaps a chance to come back for them. But if it's the same proposal over and over again, it's one year, which way?
And the, Bob, to clarify, the proposal is, you're in a preservation review district, you know, streetscape. The building is gonna be lost if it's demolished, so you're reviewing and asking, oh, you wanted to demolish the building. And there's an ask that you asked the applicant, what the subsequent construction.
Well, here is for a parking. Parking lot would be fine here. And, uh, just to clarify, it's been under the same ownership since that initial denial in twenty sixteen. No further questions for me.
Okay, uh, it'd be commissioner, if I ask the commissioner Bradley, commissioner, will I answer any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
My only question is, is, are, is the developer proposing to do anything different than the last time that we did this review in twenty sixteen? Is exactly the same ask as before?
Yes, it's for a parking lot previously, and it is a parking lot again, this time, and there is a. Um, from, they have a permit to build one right now, unfortunately, but yes, um, it's the same proposal.
Yep, thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay, Commissioner Christina Garmendia.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cal.
No questions.
Commissioner Williams.
Just to clarify a question, the current facade is added at post twenty sixteen requests?
No, 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 that, the, versus coffee house, that was added in the, in the, um. Well, it, the block itself, that building was added by the nineteen nineties, the brick facade was added on, I think around oh-six, oh-seven, actually.
No further.
If you could go back to the back of the building, I think you have one or two pictures there. Now, right there, what happens if nothing happens? It just continues to deteriorate? And when does the land become the, the owner's responsibility to do something? Because right now, they can say, you're not allowing me to do anything, am I, am I correct?
Saying they can't demolish the building, or else they can't, you know, maintain the property. So it could fall down to inspectors and the like to file complaints in this building to enforce maintenance issues in the property.
So by not doing anything, they, they start incurring cost and, and penalties?
Yeah, it's gonna be not by.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the funding, the, the fee structure in terms of how they bind people, be at the court level, or it's, yes.
And I think I'm, I'm with Commissioner Williams, the facade, the brick facade is the, is the original building, and then the, that, that is. I'm just trying to understand the building as a.
The, this is the original house that was on the site, this is, it dates to about eighteen ninety-eight, as we can tell, the house is the original structure. The brick portion on the front is the newer portion of the building.
So that's the front, the, the, the current back of the house was the original front of the house?
The original front of the house is about, right about in this area, right here. Okay, and then the front portion, let me go back to a better picture for you. This portion right here was added on, we think, some of the nineteen nineties, the actual structure was, and then they add the brick veneer sometime in the early two thousands.
Uh, with no further questions from the commission. If you would identify yourself and make your statement.
Chairman, I don't know. I have the floor, the opportunity to speak, and I am the attorney that represents the property.
Okay, if you would just state your name so that we can have it on recording.
Skip to four.
Okay.
Attorney, my office is, sorry, eighty-eleven Clayton Road, uh, St. Louis, six-three-one-one-seven. I won't take up much time, I would like to provide a little context and background for your consideration.
Just, just so that it's clear that you're not allowed to provide any new evidence or additional information, this is just for the board to decide if they want to take up the matter. So this is not an opportunity to make an argument regarding the overall situation.
I will try to stay within that confines, if you think I'm not rat my knuckles.
I'll empower David to do that.
Do anything that's not permissible here, but. All of this was, in addition to the exhibit C that I submitted that's in your packet, there was also issues. Uh, expected to be considered or raised on appeal, I did not see that in your packet. There's, there's seven pages of information concerning why we thought review was appropriate. That I submitted along with the request for review, I don't see that in your packet. That's point one. Point two. Yes, there's a history of the requests and the denials. I only became, became involved personally more recently. In the, I think, the eighteen and the nineteen, and COVID intervened, intervened, and we withdrew. But circumstances have changed, the property's been twice condemned by the city. Uh, since the last review, most recently in twenty twenty-three. All of those issues were exterior concerns. The photographs that you've seen, none were taken of the roof. Roof is falling in in certain areas, that was presented. The, we believe that the decision is flawed and should be reviewed because there was not a proper finding. What category, and that's issue in the issues for review for appeal. Specifically, it was not found as high merit, merit qualifying or non-contributing. It was considered to be contributing in the findings of fact, and there is no such classification under the ordinance. And the architectural quality of the building, that facade was put up there in oh-seven. So that's not anything of preservation per se in terms of architectural feature or quality. There was no following of the architectural quality standards discussion, including in the findings of fact, and we think the planning commission should review that. And finally, I'll say that my client bought this on foreclosure. Uh, in October of two thousand and, I think it was nine. Two thousand and nine. And this whole area that we're talking about, that preservation district, he found out after he bought it. Because he owned the adjoining property and he didn't want to construct a parking lot on it, is the reason he bought it at foreclosure. He owns the office building immediately to the west in sixty-three-twenty-three. In November, he found out that it had been declared as blighted, that whole block that was just shown from sixty-three hundred to the end. And we've been hamstrung trying to figure out what to do with that property since then. And if we request these permits to demolish to meet the parking needs in the area, in the ordinance specifically. Like, the ordinance is involved here, and if there's shown a need for parking or adjoining property ownership. That that can be considered as a viable use. I'll stop there, but I think it's complicated enough that we'd like his board to consider using. Thank you very much.
All right, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. David, I thought you were reserved there, letting it, so I think about. One of the things, uh, just to remind, um, one is, uh, when you mentioned it had been blighted. From what procedure do you know that has occurred?
It was an ordinance declaring it as blighted.
And what I encourage you to maybe research is, was it also blighted with a redevelopment plan that went?
It was, there was no redevelopment. My, my recollection serves that there was no redevelopment, redevelopment plan for that block.
And sometimes redevelopment plans provide some additional guidance, so if there's no. What I want to go back, and as we continue, is what Bob mentioned. Is the jurisdiction that was before the Office of Cultural Resources, uh, was in a preservation review district. They reviewed it, the staff recommended it not be approved as a demolition to the preservation board. Uh, and they acted really looking at two criteria. It's in a preservation review area, and that gives a high meaning to the facade it creates. And then if it's going to be demolished, what comes next? And it's the what comes next was part of this decision, and that decision, as you heard, was pregnant, so that's a little bit of context to me.
With the question, who's the alderperson for this area?
It's Ryan.
I'm sorry?
Ryan.
Okay. And has there been any comment or?
This item, he, uh, actually recused himself because he is on the preservation board. Uh, he recused himself from the item, and he did not comment on the item, only received a letter, um, of support for staff recognition from the neighborhood association.
Okay. And I believe, Marion, as you've mentioned, there are three options before us, if I'm correct, to, to affirm, to reverse, or to modify.
Those would be the options if the planning commission decides to.
If we decide to, if we decide to take it.
Yeah.
So the, so the first question tonight is, are we willing to take this up to have this conversation? And I will ask next, if we choose not to take it up, what would be the next, what's the petitioner's options?
The option is to, uh, come back with a different proposal for the cultural resources office to review, or to. Or to appeal the preservation board's decision to circuit.
You said it differently.
Yeah, if we chose not to take it up.
Or not to take it?
Yeah, they said choose, we did take it. Yeah, if we chose not to, now, if we chose to take it up, what is, what's the process?
Yeah, then we would set a date, and at that time, there would be a review of all evidence, that was part of the preservation board's decision. So yeah, we, we kind of did try to draw a line of like, we're not looking at that evidence tonight, but it's also, I mean, it's already part of the public record. But anyway, we would present that evidence as was presented before the preservation board. Planning commission would, um, review against the same criteria that the preservation board was reviewing against. So those outlined specifically in the, uh, preservation review district ordinance. And then the options for the planning commission in its own decision would be to affirm the, uh, preservation board's decision. Reverse it, or overturn it, or modify the decision.
So that slide is in reference to what would be in action if we had subsequent. But the action tonight is to.
So yeah, this is whether to undertake the review is the decision before the commission tonight.
So obviously, you don't have a full record, you don't have a manuscript in place, it's just that.
So with that, I, I hope the commission understands what is asked of us at this moment. Uh, and I will entertain a motion from a commissioner, if there is a motion to or not to, either, either motion I will, I will entertain.
I move to deny undertaking a review.
It's been moved. Was that a second from Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
So we have a motion to not take it up as a review item. It's been, it's been moved by Commissioner, uh, Banton, second by Commissioner Bradley, call for vote.
Audubon Cohn. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Garmendia.
Aye.
Commissioner Keong.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
That's right.
And the motion passes with six voting aye and one abstention to not, um, take up the.
So with that, we, as a planning commission, we will not take the item up. Uh, as I said, the, the petitioner has their next steps, that they, they can move without, without our, our hands on it, our fingerprints on it at this point. Thank you very much. With that, that is our action item. And the second item is going to be a sustainability plan review.
I want to thank you very much for your time, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so who's on the, this, this? Yes. Thanks, Paul.
Brad?
Have you been before the first planning committee before?
And that? Yeah, so you want to introduce?
My name's Elijah Russell, I'm the sustainability director at Work and Planning Urban Design Agency, and yes, it's my first planning.
Welcome.
Thank you, so, um, we would just do a brief overview, an introductory to the process of the city's sustainability plan update, which is underway. So here's a little bit of background about the original plan. So the first sustainability plan was created in twenty thirteen, it was adopted by the planning commission then. It had a triple bottom line approach, so broad and overarching, it was very, um, exciting for its time, I think it was award-winning as well. However, that was a decade, a decade ago. Um, it had hundreds of strategies, and the plan itself kind of had no ranking or rating of these approaches. And it also included a twenty-ten greenhouse gas inventory, which was based on two thousand and five baseline. Here is where the sustainability plan fits in the city's comprehensive plan, so sustainability is just kind of like one. Piece of the larger puzzle or constellation of plans, so it'll heavily relate to and intertwine with the land use plan, mobility plan, and other plans such as. Economic justice action plan, or even housing plans that may come up. The goals of the updated plan include modern strategies with clearly defined goals as seen through a climate, racial, and economic lens. Um, again, it'll align with the city's comprehensive plan elements, and the overall project implementation plan will help prioritize goals. As it relates to climate mitigation strategies, and also includes tracking abilities as well. And also, we will do a greenhouse gas inventory update, like alongside this plan update based off twenty twenty-three. Here's a little backstory of where we went, or where we've been to where we are now. Um, in January, the RFP was released, uh, February sixteenth was the deadline for submissions for a consultant to update this plan and do the greenhouse gas inventory. We received thirteen responses, which was great. Um, in March, we selected Canon Design Inc. with their team of sub consultants. And then just last week, we had our kickoff, and it was really exciting to kind of get like a vibe and vision for how we want the sustainability plan to look if it's updated. And then in, within the next week or so, we'll do pre-meetings for the greenhouse gas inventory, you know, what data we need to collect, as well as how the engagement process will look like. Here is the, uh, group of consultants, so Canon Design is the prime consultant, they're gonna do research, analysis, data, data visualization, they will also create a dashboard. Um, they also help with the greenhouse gas inventory, we have Vertical Group, Greenwood Consulting, Blue Point, and Black Rock Consulting for community engagement. Here are the five tasks among the scope of work. One, the first is research and review of existing plans and documents. Um, second task is an existing conditions analysis, task three, which covers the entire timeline of the plan. Um, it's greenhouse gas inventory, we have community engagement and collaboration, and then finally, the plan development itself. And then here's like a brief overview of the timeline for the update of the plan with some, uh, uh, milestones. Right now, we're, the first kind of quarter, half the year is very, uh, important, as we have the plan kickoff, we'll have, get a summary of key findings and inputs. We'll do that data request, so that will be like emissions data from the airport and, uh, transportation elements like that, community and municipal driven. And then we'll start the greenhouse gas inventory work. Um, we'll also get analysis reports, we'll create an initial, an initial governance model, which is how that, uh, in community engagement and stakeholder engagement will look like. Let outreach materials finalize, used, distributed from there. And then in November, we'll begin the steering committee meetings as a relay set, um, engagement and outreach. We'll have the equity framework developed in January, which is when the plan will be modeled through, and then hopefully. By April, a draft of this updated sustainability plan, followed by the greenhouse gas narrative, which will accompany the actual report and metrics that that, um. Finds, and then an engagement data, data summary, so we know what everyone said, how that relates to the plan itself. And then finally, in June, that dashboard will be created, and that dashboard is kind of like a public-facing tracking element, so we can have our priorities outlined and. You know, what we're doing to meet those goals and where we're at, followed by, um, updating or uploading the greenhouse. you know, what we're doing to meet those goals and where we're at, followed by um, updating or uploading the greenhouse gas inventory through ICLI, which will bring us into like compliance with our global covenant of mayor's protocol. And then a final sustainability plan, which we hope will be digestible and readable, available for everyone. Is a free phone?
So why don't you add a little sweetness to that, and you've been with us for a year, uh, elsewhere employed in the city before that. But just give them a little sampling of all the things and places you've been and, but I assume are in person to be there working on sustainability, helping get St. Louis on the.
Yeah, I've been a lot of places in the past year, but I've been with the city since twenty fifteen. I was out at Brightside St. Louis, which was a, which is a nonprofit slash, slash city agency. There, I was program manager for the recycling, education, and outreach program, also coordinator for all their sustainability initiatives. So native plantings, um, solar array, cool roof, uh, other green infrastructure management onsite in the demonstration garden. And then from there, I joined this team, so whole new world of planning, which is new for me, but I have a master's in environmental science management. So this is really kind of in my wheelhouse and I would say over the past year, I've met with several departments about what they're doing. Uh, like this has really been my focus since the kickoff. And then I've also been working with a lot of community agencies, for example, with the community change grants that we're working with and um, helping Azia with the Sloop update, so it's been.
And the member of the Sustainability Directors Network?
Oh, yeah, yes, a member of the urban sustainability's direct, directors network, as well as on the steering committee for the Midwest Climate Collaborative.
Which pollinates with involvement with other cities in the Midwest and nationally, uh, and it's a great uh, great opportunity to make sure we're pollinating and getting the best practices.
Very excited for this new plan.
Yeah, it's great.
As is the mayor.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll just open any questions for our comments from commissioners. I will go through the list. I'm sorry?
So it is um, partly ARPA and I, I forget the other.
Is SLDC involved at all?
Yeah, they're on our core team to help with the visioning.
Do you think the biggest difference with this plan will be the one that was from ten years ago?
Yeah, I think the biggest difference, one, hopefully it'll be a little bit shorter, but also we'll have some um, more tangible goals. So if we have these prioritized goals, we need to know, do we have the data already and metrics to be able to achieve these, or is one of our goals getting the data metrics available to achieve these goals? So we'll have, you know, some short term goals, maybe in a few years, and then some longer term goals that incorporate climate mitigation.
And one other thing that helps us, I use the word credibility, but it's useful in that we're not new to this task. Uh, and particularly by doing the greenhouse gas inventory and milestones, it's nice to be able to do that tracking. And then the first plan, great community input and pages of input and priorities. It got digested into a fewer number of priorities. Alicia is trying to put the point on this, is we're going to check where we are, check best practices, set up some reasonable number of goals and achievements.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
With it, as we're moving along, the next review is Maryam with our major planning initiative updates.
Be super quick, just trying to make kind of a practice of keeping the commission, people and members of the public tuning in on, on key things moving forward. So the strategic landings plan, we've done a bunch of uh, kind of place specific workshops in the last couple of months. We're doing a lot of detailed internal work, beginning to develop the plan documents, a lot of road testing, detailed map reviews, things like that. We will have steering committee and working group meetings in late August to get into some of the crunchy issues. And uh, we will have the next major workshop, or we're calling it a release party for Sloop Scoop number three, October seventh. I will follow up with a calendar invitation for all of the shares with the time, date, location, to have that. And that Sloop Scoop three will present a sort of near final iter, uh, misspelling, sorry, iteration of um, the land use plan and the designations, not interaction, interation. Um, neighbor planning, John, if you want to.
So quick, I think, uh, with neighborhood planning, the Project Connect area, uh, which is the six neighborhoods uh, near the NGA, they uh, have, have a contract in process, so they have that, that's been the update for a little bit of time now. But we believe they're heading the finishing steps in the next uh, two weeks from now. Wonderful. And they um, held their first neighborhood planning committee meeting. They have not held one since, I think about December of last year or so. Uh, with the new consultants and our borough partners, oh, they're getting back on track with that. The plan area one, uh, the Vill, greater Vill Kingsway East, we have the pleasure, actually working with Commissioner Aaron Williams as well, because he's leading the uh, cultural corridor along Dr. Martin King Boulevard, so we're kind of partners in that. But the plan area one is finally uh, kicking off September twenty-sixth, so please mark your calendars, that's going to be at Andy Park. Uh, that'll be an outdoor fair, so we're very excited for that. Uh, also, uh, with the engagement calendar, if you know, uh, uh, people, places, or events in the area, just please email me and let me know. Uh, plan area two, which is Walnut Park East, Walnut Park West, to Mark Twain. Uh, we're pre- prepping for phase one, which includes the engagement plan, the work plan, and we kind of just uh, getting ourselves on the right direction. And then plan area three, which is Bay to North Point, uh, we're doing the contract being in process right now. I don't know, but we're for questions here, discussion for any neighborhood planning.
With that, again, open forum for any commissioner questions at this point. It's a job that's available to you at all times, so. He's, he's easy to reach, so. Thank you, John.
Some other quick um, updates of note here. Uh, in partnership with the zoning section of the building division, we are in the selection process right now for zoning code and map overhaul. So we have received responses, the RFP, and the selection committee meeting is actually meeting tomorrow to determine a shortlist, and then we'll be conducting interviews. So if it all goes well here on the schedule, in late August, that making a selection. So pretty exciting, that's all moving forward, and uh, it's really uh, solid proposals to review.
Are we in the process of doing?
Overhauling the zoning. And if Mary and Evan are still on, just huge shout out to them. Of course, they're a huge part of this process, wrapping the RFP and everything else. So it's uh, really fun and exciting to be working as an interdepartmental team on all of this.
You want to give an update of the status of the zoning text amendment that we have publicly carrying at the planning commission?
Yes, um, the TOD text amendment, which then became Board Bill thirteen, was uh, third read and passed at the full Board of Aldermen on August the eighth. And it is um, I believe, kind of in queue for final mayoral signature approval. So in a matter of moments, it, it will be law, and we have all of the kind of IT systems um, ready for a uh, switch flip, to make sure that it's integrated into the permitting system and also clear information available to uh, the community and the property information database.
Thank you. All right, the next item we're going to talk about is the commission. Yeah, Commissioner Garmendia.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I just had a quick request um, for, from, on the last item, which is can uh, uh, staff let us know the first time that that zoning text amendment is put, or will we, will we know when it's uh, put into place? I, basically, I just want to know, like, who's the first person that gets to take advantage of these new regulations?
Yeah, gotcha. I can send out a notification as soon as it's kind of fully signed into, like, fully enacted.
Um, I can send out a notification to the commission.
Um, that day.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, uh, the commission, we talked about having formed a committee. And I think the committee has started its work. We've met twice, and I think our last meeting really pushed through some things. I'm going to ask Maryam to kind of go over the uh, discussions. We'll have, we'll then have a full committee, commission mid, uh, discussion about what we are doing. Uh, and I'll, I'll follow up with that, so Mary.
So what I've put together here is a super brief, high level overview. The committee's met twice. Um, and I think the work has been to identify and answer specific questions about the existing process and to identify kind of the ambiguities and questions that new rules and procedures can uh, substantially address. And so um, the questions kind of provided by um, Commissioner Garmendia on the committee were, you know, what, what is, I mean, can we get into writing the process of setting agendas? Defining the required elements for presentation to the commission, having a way of thinking about the staff time to prepare different elements, um, and, you know, it will depend on the type of uh, zoning or uh, uh, commission item, the potential role of outside parties in preparation of those elements. And then also, what happens if a recommendation leaves the commission and then regulations are amended at the Board of Aldermen? What does that back and forth interaction look like? So those were the questions, and the rules and procedures which have been drafted, and I, I've here outlined, I think the one that we have, um, that we started to develop some good consensus around. Um, but the four issues are clarifying what constitutes a negative recommendation, because that will relate to that interaction between commission, uh, the commission and its recommendations and the Board of Aldermen. Um, also, creating a process for the planning commission to take up review of items, should they be amended by the Board of Aldermen, so setting clear standards for timely review. Um, and kind of balancing the need for planning commission to exercise, exercise its independent review role, but also to enable legislation to proceed in a sort of timely and predictable manner within a legislative session. Um, the third rule and procedure is um, formalizing a process for planning commission participation in the prioritization of proactive projects, like, I think particularly zoning policy items. Uh, and then also, what would be procedures for departing from that annual prioritization that's presented to the commission? And then fourth, and this is maybe a little bit more of a uh, cleanup or catchall of uh, providing commissioners clarity on how to handle any communications they receive from outside parties, like applicants or developers. Um, just so commissioners are supported in um, navigating those moments, should that happen. Any other? I can go into.
But let me, let me give a little bit of just context for those that were not part of the committee. Uh, we were, number one is we are limited, we limit ourselves to one hour. Uh, because it's a, it's outside of our commission meeting, and because of time, of time constraints and time respect. So we really kind of took one item and we cut it up and we diced it and we sliced it and we purged it and we looked at every angle possible for it. Before we came up with, I think, a consensus, because obviously we, it is not an actual item outside of the commission. Uh, and we came up with what we think to be respectable for this particular item. And as the committee does other work, I think it will take one item, deal with that item on an hourly basis, because just the time constraints. And if not, you get, we have found ourselves being, you know, downhill on roller skates. So I think we were really uh, present in that moment of dealing with that issue and that item. Uh, so with that, would you give us, well, let me ask if the committee has anything to say at this point that I have not touched on? Commissioner Garmendia?
Uh, yes, I, I think, you know, the uh, committee's doing good work. Um, I think we have a, we're working now through, I'm still providing my feedback on some of the great first the, the rules and procedures that have been drafted. Um, you know, things like timeline about like, when might we have that um, priority list? That, when should that annual process be and um, and just uh, I think, I think this is going to be a really valuable document. And um, I think one thing to note is, we were looking for precedent, like what rules do other planning commissions have? Uh, that could help us with some of these questions. And uh, honestly, we're doing some original work here, which is uh, for better, for worse. Um, and so I think it'll be a real contribution, not just to, for our planning commission, but for planning commissions. Um, that may have to, you know, deal with similar um, similar challenges as people become more interested in zoning reform. Um, so, which I think is happening, so uh, really, I appreciate the work of the staff and uh, and I hope the committee continues to uh, meet until we hash out all these issues, but um, I'm still working on providing some fe- meaningful feedback. Um, and I was a little waylaid by the flu last week, um, unexpectedly. So I was hoping to have done some of this last week, but um, really appreciate it. And um, yeah, so I'm looking, I'm, I am actually really excited to have these rules formed um, uh, for our planning commission, and I think it's, it really creates a, um, it'll create a, like a document that as we encounter strange situations or confusion, that we have something to build upon um, over time, um, as these situations arise. That's how rules and procedures become, you know, become something that's needed, is we have uh, uh, situations where we lack clarity. So thank you all for your, um, for being part of it.
With that, then Mary, why don't you go over the one, how do we move forward with that one item that we, we decided on? What's the?
Yeah, the specific item, um, I can, do you have it here in a kind of pseudo appendix? It's a lot of words. I'll try to zoom in here, to see whether we wanted to get into this. But this is the one that was drafted, and I think where we've started to form some consensus, and this is the one addressing the interaction, or no, I should say, um, if things like zoning text amendments are amended at the Board of Aldermen, what then is the process and expectation for the planning commission to take up review of those changes? Um, and so I can either read it, or maybe it would be better if I just let people read.
You can full screen it.
Oh, you, oh, thanks, Sean.
I think the biggest part of this, as she's pulling up, is the going to third line down, bold and that says the planning commission shall take up review of those changes in regulations within forty-five days of a count, uh, of our press. So we are, we are controlled by that calendar, so it doesn't die, it doesn't sit around. And that was really the major crux of this discussion is that period. And we looked at the calendar from the Board of Aldermen, we looked at how processes that we need to do. Uh, David was engaged as long as it meets the request of sunshine laws, what have you. And that was the, the, the major part, and the second one was the second paragraph. We may turn, choose to affirm the amendment, modify, uh, recommend modifications, up, uphold the initial recommendation, or, and it was a long discussion of this term, transmit a negative recommendation. And I think I'll ask Mary, and if you can kind of give what that neck, what that conversation was real, just briefly.
Yeah, so in the planning que, ooh? Is it the planning commissioner or is it? What that gets into the.
It's actually, I think it's this.
In the zoning ordinance, thanks for, that's a backup here. Um, in the zoning ordinance, it clarifies that um, the planning commission, and I think this was drafted at the time, more with the idea of a. the planning commission, and I think this was drafted at the time more with the idea of a petition initiated or applicant initiated rezoning request. But it says in our ordinance that if the planning commission issues a negative recommendation, so kind of voting to say we recommend against a rezoning or recommend against, in this case, um, an amendment to the initial regulation proposed by the planning commission. Then the final vote at the Board of Alderman would require a two thirds of the full uh, membership of the Board of Alderman. So basically saying thumbs down on something requires that the Board of Alderman pass a higher threshold of votes to pass something as well. And I'll I'll say maybe a couple of other things about the ideas here. We, we as a commission actually haven't encountered this specific issue. But I do understand from colleagues at the board and Commissioner Garmentia that kind of the uncertainty around whether and when the planning commission would take something back up has made it, um, has added uncertainty into advancing legislation and how to tackle amendments at the board and when this should happen. Kind of this uncertainty has added to the challenges in advancing zoning legislation. So I just want to clarify, we haven't exactly hit this issue or challenge yet. But the lack of certainty has been its own uh, I suppose barrier in um navigating the legislative process. So I I think it is a worthy thing to address.
So the question I have for David, and I think this will answer our next step. Because we're setting a a rule and policy procedure for the commission, does that need to be a vote? Or are we just simply writing our policy book?
Um, I think at this stage, it looks like we're probably just still writing it, but ultimately it needs to be adopted by.
Okay. So the question then, do we by the way, the question is, do we, do we create by eight policies? And then create an actual item document? Or do we approve each item as we go? Because you, you know, we can continue this on for infinity and beyond. Uh, so that's the commission's, that's my question to the commission. And I'm open to it for a quick discuss, you know. There's.
I mean, I I think Commissioner Garmentia said she's still sort of reviewing the language. Um, so I don't know even, I mean, I don't know if I necessarily have a problem with voting individually. I think maybe it's easier to come up with a whole package to vote on. Um, but I, you know, I don't necessarily have a preference one way or the other. I think one important thing to note here is we also had a lengthy discussion about what happens should the planning commission fail to take up an item within that forty-five calendar days and that would also the discussion was basically wanted to make sure that something just doesn't die and go into, you know, infinity space somewhere. So if if for whatever reason, we weren't able to pick, you know, pick up something within that forty-five days, it still has an avenue to go be passed by the Board of Alderman, but it would also require that two thirds majority vote in that case. So I don't know if I see that necessarily written here, but that was another sort of major point in the discussion.
Might be a race. I know that to wait until there's more of a package.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Garmentia?
Yeah, I was uh going to say I I accord, I'm I'm willing to like look at or vote on these iteratively. Um, but of course, yeah, I think what Miriam just said, which is the I think some of them make sense as a package, um, because they interact with each other. Um, and uh, but yeah, I think I I think, you know, given that we are doing this in kind of one hour chunks outside the planning, regular planning commission. I I'm a little hesitant to like say, oh, we should do it all as one big package because we don't know yet how long that would take. And even just this component, um, it I think provides is useful um, on its own. So that's something um, I I I'd be willing to vote in the, not at this meeting, but at future meetings on like pieces of the rules, um, or, you know, and instead of waiting for it to all be complete at some point, just because we don't know how long that will take. Thanks.
Okay, I am in agreement that we that, you know, items be put together before I pack it and then you vote, if you have an opportunity, we're meeting is set to review items when we don't have like a short agenda, spend the rest of the day reviewing all of those, because if not, we can spend an hour additionally to the mission dealing with one item. But the packet being developed, sent to to members in advance, really get a chance to hash out, redline them and come back and make those those votes. And then you, we do it annually that your plot, your or, you know, that your policy and procedures are reviewed or updated as needed. So that we can control the time and manage that. That's my recommendation at this point. So we will continue to feed you what the committee has met on, just so you're not, you're not, you know, call off guarded by five or six of them. We'll just kind of give you those updates as we go on. So I, at this point, I think the committee, Mary will control, continue to manage the dates and times of those. And we'll get that work continuously done. If that's good with everybody.
Yeah, we'll work on getting another meeting scheduled.
Okay. And the the topic will be determined prior to what, you know, what item needs to be. And if there's something that needs to be done with expeditiously uh, or pushed to the very top, it could be done and acted upon uh, in that order, if something's pressing us. Uh, but it does take a commit, a commission, planning commission vote to enact any of that. With that. All right. That is our committee report. Uh, Don and I are going to split. I've got some remarks and I'm going to let Don start with any business remarks and then.
Sure. Couple of things. Uh, thank you for the work of the committee that we just heard about. Thank you for Christina and understanding and the complexities of sometimes the planning world. And being appreciative of us collectively working on good new practices for our planning endeavors in the city. Just want to remind, uh, part of our context for that is Jonathan is currently the state president of the American Planning Association. Tracy was a prior state president of American Planning Association of how national leadership positions. And we all know that uh, planning is a challenging position in some places around the country. We often have uh, statements and conversations about being in a blue metro in a red state, but the laws and whatnots. Appreciate we're doing this. Uh, I think you all know, uh, PDA staff is busy, very busy, very productive. Uh, you know, the mayor announced when the budget was being prepared, that would be pretty austere this coming year. And that is true. Uh, we have a little bit of hiring in the process. Uh, the two that I'll speak about is we had a departure from the Director of Cultural Resources. Uh, Meg LaStowe has moved to the Netherlands. Uh, her job has been posted, uh, was posted prior to her departure. Uh, and we're collecting names to do that interview. Second vacancy in the in the management skill area is that of our head of G I S. And Tim um Shalahan, who holds that position, the position is funded by jointly between PDA and the IT department because we want to be an evangelical about geographic based information about the use of that technology, but he's housed with us. Uh, and Cindy and I, actually, Tim has participated in the interviews for his replacement. He's going to that big site up the street called NGA. But he's the candidates that we interviewed, uh, just telling Jake a little earlier, was quite remarkable. We have an offer to one, so I'll keep my fingers crossed. Well, we interviewed some remarkable people all on Zoom. Uh, because one, we were interviewing, he was in England. And I thought he could work remotely from England. Uh, another one was in a West African country visiting his family. And a third was in Orlando, but she had been trained in India. A guy from West Avenue actually is at Rice University. His wife went to Wash U, moving back to St. Louis because she's taking a position. We're pulling the rope in for him and hope he gets here uh uh, in September will probably be his start date. And Miriam and Grace have been working diligently on getting new additional planning commission members for our vacancy vacancies, and that's an important step. And when she and Grace talk about it, they talk about the folks that will be growing. Quite excited about joining.
Okay. Uh, with that, can you go ahead and pull everybody up on the screen for me? Uh, as Don mentioned, hiring is critical for the city. I have had the opportunity to sit through the employment of Dale, who sat here for a while, and then I watched Cecilia sit here after that, and now Miriam's doing that job. Uh, so yeah, I understand these the cycles to change. Uh, so I will thank the staff for all the work that they have done uh, and continue to do for the planning commission. Uh, I've sat here, I've been here three mayors, uh, Slade was, Mayor Slade was first to appoint me. Mayor Crispin was second one to sign me and Mayor Jones has kept me here. Uh, with that, I have to say my life has changed. Uh, there are some things coming aboard. There have been some major, I have three major life changes. One is, and some of you know, I'm a, I'm a ordained pastor. I can bury you and marry you if you need to. Uh, I have been, I have been out of my major pulpit for about four years. And coming this October, I am, I'm expecting to be reassigned to a new uh, part, a new church to service. Don knows I spent ten years, fifteen years on the road between Columbia, Jeff City and Louisiana, Missouri, uh, every Sunday, out in the morning, back in the afternoon, and put some real miles on my car. I'm not doing that anymore, so they finally decided to let me come back again. Uh, with that, I have also changed uh, my employment. Uh, there is going to be an announcement within the next sixty days of that opportunity. I'm excited about it. Uh, so I have decided that between my family, the ministry and the new employment, I cannot be effective as a chairman. I've done my tenure here, about ten years, I think. I've been between uh but I think between Rich and Tracy, who have sat here with me, we've been, Don, we've been here the longest. Uh, and I will say to each of them personally, thank you for your friendship and your support. Uh, I would definitely thank the staff. Don has been a great friend from, I've worked for the city. I've served on the, I I've testified before the tenth commission. Somehow I ended up in this room in the planning commission. And I kept trying to get away and Don wouldn't let me. Uh, but I think at this time I have to do it. This role is a citizen uh, role. It has to be filled by a citizen. And that may have, that may change for me in the next year. So it's also another opportunity. So I just want to say thank you for all of your support. Uh, thank you for all of the work you've done. It's not, it's been probably a bad kept secret. Uh, but it's, we tried to hold it back for a minute because everything was put in place. So with that, I will simply say before we finish, before I finish my remarks, I always say this. Um, please keep in mind Reverend Officer Travis Brown, who is officer that's still in hospital from the uh, situation in Ferguson. Uh, this is not just a city, this is community and a regional issue. Uh, we stood through it and we'll stand through it again. So with that, uh, I will say thank you, Don. Thank you, staff, for your support. Thank you, commissioners for being there with me. And especially to my friend Michelle, who has me on speed dial, who will keep my number in her phone. I've, and I promise you, you'll actually see me probably more than you actually did before. Maybe not with that thank you and whoever's will be the new chair at this point.
So speaking chairs, step up out of the chair.
Oh, you're already picking, I'm getting kicked out there.
And one, we owe you applause for all the service. What we'd like to do is also remember and have Grace join me. Right, hold this, and she's going to be there.
Hey, all right. Whereas Earl Strader Jr. has served as a dedicated member of the City of St. Louis Planning Commission for nearly ten years. And whereas Mr. Strader has led the commission as its citizen chair for over seven of those ten years and whereas Mr. Strader's leadership and service is consistently thoughtful, compassionate and focused, always with grace and under, wow, I'm the well being. Current and future residents of St. Louis. And whereas Mr. Strader has guided the commission through many difficult and complex decisions, always with grace and understanding. And whereas Mr. Strader has also served the community through his professional and spiritual leadership. And whereas Mr. Strader was a joy for the city staff and his colleagues on the commission to work with. Now therefore, I, Tashar O. Jones, Mayor of the City of St. Louis, hereby proclaim August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four as should say Chair Earl Strader Jr. Day.
So anyway. And I thought Don was very disciplined. If you, as long as you know, Don, Don loves maps. And I said, Don, the only thing I want to do is be able to take a map home and frame it on my wall because I am, I'm a lifelong St. Louisan. And if and when that time comes, I want to be and say, yeah, my name's on that map. So I'm looking for one of those sloop maps, but I did not know this. So please thank Mayor on my behalf, who has been a friend too. Thank you for making this happen. And Don, thank you. And Grace, your name is on here. So I'll always remember you. There you go. That's what I wanted. So with that.
But I was going to be devilish today and get a sloop map that would be exactly this size.
Been just as happy. With that, the last most enjoyable entertainment will be to close the meeting. It's been moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Banton. Meeting adjourned.
Now, the next thing. The next thing is we're going to Shafley's. I'm the last to know.